All right, I've got five o'clock on my phone, so let's go ahead and call this work session to order. And I'm just gonna kick it off to whoever wants to kick it off. I don't know if Matt, you're gonna start or we're gonna send it over to Dwayne and Lisa, but you tell me.
Chase gets the honor, so I'm just gonna let Chase jump right in with what he's got and get us rolling for tonight.
I picked everybody but Chase.
That's all right.
Don't worry about it. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. Thanks for taking time today for us to talk through some of these pieces that we have coming up for FMP two point oh. We're gonna share a few things and just to start really give the board a reminder of kind of where we are. This is the timeline that we provided for FMP two point oh. Several months ago, as we lead up to the November second ballot initiative, and so we are actually a week later than we said on this. I probably should have looked at this beforehand, but this is the original one. So we're on May fourth, not the twenty seventh, and it's our board work session. Dwayne's gonna give us an update on the closeout of FMP one point oh, and then we'll talk a little bit about community engagement and what we're planning on for the information sessions, as well as I think round out the night with the preschool or early childhood discussion as well. And so that's kind of just a blueprint for the season. You know, I'll come back to this after Dwayne's gone to talk to you about the connection between this work we're gonna do around community and community engagement in June, as in it connects back to the work the board's gonna do in June as well, and then into August and next September. But first, Dwayne has a brief kind of overview summary of the closeout of FMP one point oh. Dwayne?
Yeah. Yep, and very brief, and Kim, would you load that up? So just a real brief review, you know, we've been doing this for what, eight years, almost nine years, I guess, and most of this is all that, and I put this together more for your use when you're out in public. If somebody asks you, you know, what have you done? You know, they may be new to Iowa City or new to the program, if they've been hiding under a rock somewhere, but anymore. Anyway, you know, we started back in twenty thirteen, in early twenty thirteen with that revenue purpose statement, and then went on to late twenty thirteen with the approval of the plan. And that was after, I think I counted seven community meetings, and you know, there's, there's a lot of input and well over five hundred people attended those meetings, and there's one in a hotel downtown. There must have been three hundred alone at that one meeting. We filled that ballroom, if you remember that. And so we had a lot of, a lot of input, and that's gonna, gonna help lead the way with the next part of the discussion there. But, you know, the big, the big significant thing other than sales tax, of course, is the bond vote in September of twenty seventeen. None of this would have been doable without that. And probably the other factor was the accelerated plan. We finished it three years early, and you're all aware of that. And there's a lot of benefits to that. Not only do we get students in the building sooner, we got air conditioning done sooner. We got to save a lot of money on inflation. If you follow the news lately, construction costs are spiraling, just spiraling out of control. And if you've tried to buy a two by four stud at Menards, it's double what it was six months ago. Well, it was doubled. You know, those aren't the materials we necessarily use, but it's pretty indicative of the industry as a whole, and it just has gone out of control. So we have saved some money. Can you put a dollar on it? I don't know, but I know it's significant. You know, and the other thing I wanted to point out about where we've been is that we were averaging three to four million dollars per month in construction expenditures. So that tells you the pace of the construction and the, and the, just the continual grind that we went through at the physical plant and with our contractors, with the board, and all the actions we've taken, the staff and moving students around, but three to four million a month is a pretty significant number, even for a small or medium sized construction company. But we peaked in the summer of twenty nineteen at seven and a half million. That's seven and a half million per month. So we were really cranked up in twenty eighteen. It didn't, it didn't let up until well into November, December. So it really kind of indicates the, the pace at which we were going. It also kind of indicates to you in the future where you might be able to, what you might be able to manage in the future. You know, you know, you can do three or four million pretty easy, and it's, I think, a pretty good number. I wouldn't advocate the seven point five about this all in, but it was worth, you know, we did, we built four new schools, new high school, three elementaries. We, we, we touched twenty five other buildings in different ways, and so it's, it's been a pretty good project. The next page and a half, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, waste a lot of time with that, but if you get, if you get a chance to read it, those are all the things that we did in the buildings. You know, those are the things we accomplished. You know, the GL thermals, the ADA, the, the heating and cooling, the ventilation systems. You know, windows, doors, insulation, the energy efficient features, just the whiskers on and on, LED lighting, for example, the technology, the acoustics. Got all those things accomplished, and those were all desires that the community had in creating the Twenty First Century Classroom. So I'm pretty, pretty, pretty proud of that. I think we got a lot, a lot of that accomplished. The program, we didn't get everything, but we came a long way. Couple of other nice touches along the way were Man and Longfellow. We're both recognized by Iowa City and the state of Iowa for historic preservation. And I think that was a real plus in keeping community, you know, keeping neighborhood schools and doing it right, make them look right. And if you look at City High today, you're gonna say, hey, there might be one coming for that school too, because that's really shaping up. It's, it's a really nice facility. So I think you, the board can take some pride, and the school district can take some pride in, in the, the buildings that we did. And I did make note here along the way that appendix nine, I know, was a pain in the tooth for two, for a lot of people. I remember having a board member way back when asked me, why do we have to approve this ten times? Well, so you may remember him, but anyway, they, it was a process, and that, what that process did was it, it took the design through certain steps. And along the way, we got professional construction estimates. I didn't rely on architects like, or engineers. I got, had an estimator do it. It costs us a little bit of money to do that, but in the end, we got projects that were on budget most of the time. And it was just a, a good process to maintain going into the future and not shortcut just because you don't want to do the ten steps. It, I, I'm thinking it's a real model for a lot of other school districts. You know, we did value engineering. We, we, we took plans and went back and took out what we couldn't afford and put back in what we knew we needed to have. So that, that was good. The ADA systems, the ADA improvements, the building code improvements, the fire sprinkler systems, the fire safety system, life safety, the security, safety and security, that was a twelve million dollar ad that we used pebble dollars for. And we improved the safety and security of every building in the district, and we still have a little bit more to do at West, a little bit more to do at City and Phase Two. But there are those, even those buildings are much more secure than they ever were. So we made a lot of improvements in a lot of different ways, something I think the district and the board can be proud of. And I guess that's enough said. If you, if you ever get questioned about that, that's, that's, you got a pretty good list to, to check to. The next page, Kim, this one, you know, we debate about, we're gonna show you this, but I, I really felt strongly that we should. And this shows you all of the funding sources, unless, I gotta give Les some credit. He was, he was a big part of all this together. This is where we had our income for this, for the facility master plan one point oh, and we had three hundred and seventy one, nearly three hundred and seventy two million dollars in income. And it wasn't just general obligation bond. It wasn't just saved. We had, we had bond premiums of thirteen nine. You know, those were what the investors paid back to the district. We had saved premiums, and we did the same revenue bonds of over four million dollars. We, we had energy rebates. We kind of lost track of that, and we don't talk about it much publicly, but two point three million dollars we got back from American Online Energy for the improvements. Now, that was, that's to help offset the improvements that we made in our buildings. And in order to qualify for those, those rebates, we had to exceed the minimum code by forty to fifty percent. It isn't just meet the code. We had to go past the code and exceed it by a minimum of forty percent to even qualify for those rebates. And we won a number of energy awards. I, one of the very first ones we got was Penn Element Consortium of Energy Companies, and they, each energy company submitted their own candidates. We won two or three of those awards. So I think, I think we did a pretty good job with making our buildings more energy efficient. You know, we're probably now heating and air conditioning for the same cost that we used to heat, and because we're putting in efficient systems, we're, we're using, you know, green energy. It's clean. It's, it really will last for a long time. Now, there's maintenance, of course, with those, with that equipment, but still, it's a, it was a pretty smart investment on behalf of the district to do that. We had, we had pedal revenues, and the main five I put there is, is really low. We, if you consider all the lifecycle projects that we did to complement our projects, we did roofing projects, we did restroom projects, we've done lighting projects, just it goes on and on that we used pebble for that complemented the facility master plan. So that, that's a little number, but I didn't want to overstate it. And then Les would put that money in the bank when we got those revenue bonds. We've got a little interest off those saved bonds as well. There was over almost a million and a half there. So you're looking at it, you know, that total sum of three hundred and seventy one million, and I put the percentages there though, so you can have a, have a feel for that. The next page, Kim, this is one that really got me going because I really wanted to know where we were and like the staff at the physical plant and Les and his staff, we really sat down, we really, we've done a really good job of keeping track of how we spent our money. And I don't know if you can expand that just a little bit, Kim, maybe blow it up so it's a little easier to read. Thank you. So, you know, the contract cost, that's what we paid our general contractors, nearly two hundred and ninety five million dollars. And at eighty two percent, the original plan, I had, I had budgeted eighty percent. The fact that we spent eighty two is good because we had less expenditures and could put more money into the buildings. So this is a positive number. It, it, you know, we were able to spend a little bit more on the actual projects than paying for things like testing fees and permits and engineers and architects. Not that that isn't important, it is, but we were able to put a little bit more money into the project. So that's what that number tells me. You know, we had a, a four and a half to five percent contingency. You heard me say this over and over the projects, but we ended up at four point one. So we did pretty good. Now, we, we didn't, didn't go crazy on our change orders. There was always gonna be some. Iowa City has the worst soil conditions in any place I've ever worked, and, you know, we paid for that. And so there were a lot of, a lot of extras for soil conditions in Iowa City. Those of you that lived here for a while know that, but it's, it, it gobbled up a big portion of that four percent. Design fees did five point seven percent. I originally started out at seven to seven and a half, and we were able to get it down and keep it down because we've got competitive quotes from architects, but the reason we got those competitive quotes is because we had a system in place. And once they got into the system and they, you know, the appendix nine and how we approve things and how we manage our projects, and what we expected of them, they were able to sharpen their pencils. So we got that down to five point seven percent is pretty darn good. Most, most school districts will tell you they're paying eight, nine percent for architects fees. So it's a pretty good number. Furniture or soft costs are the permits, the fees, you know, testing, the Terracons of the world, you know, the, the commissioning, that kind of thing. That was about two percent, which you gotta do. It helps you manage your projects. You know, it's, it's good insurance. If you were to build buildings and you didn't test your soil, or you didn't test your steel bolts, or you didn't test your mechanical systems, you're gonna have failures. And that two percent kept us from having failures and failures in the future. So it's always a good investment to, to be on top of it with those, with those kind of testing fees. Furniture equipment, we put over eleven million dollars into our buildings and new furniture, new equipment, and that does not include the number we put in Liberty High. That was a couple million on top of this that came out of the general fund. So a lot of money has been spent to refurnish the district. No, but it certainly made a, made a difference and made buildings look better. Technology, that's a low number because in the beginning, we included the technos towards the end during the general, the bond program. We pulled those numbers out and, and made, and identified them. So two point two four million, excuse me, two point four million is a low number. It's probably closer to five to six that we spent on technology. And in addition to that, technology had their own budget and their own revenues streams and put a lot in. And one thing that technology did is they extended the fiber network around the district. You know, we have fiber, I think, to every building now except for wherever we're working on that, and they may have already figured that out for all I know. So that fiber network has narrowed our district faster, quicker. One thing we did too, you see, you know, you might want to remember someday in the future is that at Liberty High School, we built a backup server room to back up the ESC, and it's there, and it's, the fiber's there. It's up on the second floor, up there above the van room, and Brady's shaking his head. He probably knows where it's at. He's been up there. You gotta go up the staircase and get there, but it's there. So if you ever, and it's a reinforced bunker, so that if you're a storm event, you won't, you won't lose both. So someday we need to invest and finish that investment and, and set out that room. Program contingency. Now, I don't want you to get too excited. But we spent three hundred and sixty million of that five hundred or three hundred and seventy, okay? There's still eight million dollars that we haven't spent, and it's a good, it's, it's a solid number. I've been through this over and over and over. I wanted to make sure it was right. And after you take all our costs, we still have a pot of money there in what I call pro, program contingency. Now, we're not done. We still have to finish City High. We still have Lenny. We still have a little bit of horn. Maybe you touch it with them and Garner. No, no, Burner's done. We got a little bit of blow, but we're gonna use some of that. But there's gonna be some left. And so what it advocated we do is we go back to Southeast and we finish the kitchen. Their kitchen is one of the worst kitchens in the district. It was a bond program. It's a legitimate use of these bonds. I'm not saying this is all bond money. Some of it could be attributed to sales tax, but they need a kitchen. Northwest needs a kitchen. You know, we need a career tech center at City High, and yes, we need tennis courts at City High. And I know it was brought up this week by a board member, that what are we doing about the tennis courts? And yes, we displaced them. And yes, these are all items are in that first part of Facility Master Plan two point oh, critical needs, but we've got the funds to start a couple of those projects next spring, if not yet this fall. So money is there. We should invest it. We can make surprises, surprise that a lot of here in the country. But anyway, that's it. It's just kind of a rough summary of where we've been and how we did, and I would be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Dwayne, could you just briefly tell us how much of this, how much of the management of this, of seven plus year project did we do internally and how much, and how much was done by, by architects, consultants, and so forth? So we can get some idea of what we need in the, in the future here from terms of this staff.
Yeah, it, well, I can probably say that we managed it in-house. I, you know, there was myself, there was two construction managers. And we had one staff person dedicated to do a lot of the clerque work and keep us together and manage, help manage our techs and engineers. A lot of school districts rely on architects to do the day to day management, but we did not, which is another reason the fee was a little lower. So that, that was a benefit one. And just, you know, my previous life in Des Moines, in those seven, eight years I was there, we did have a construction manager firm manage all the projects because we didn't have enough in-house staff to do it. We did three hundred and fifty million there in seven years I was there, and, but we paid seven percent fee, a premium of seven percent on top of all our projects, plus their expenses. So they got a seven percent margin, plus we paid for, for two or three construction managers and two or three staff people and a couple of people run that organization. And when we did value engineering, we paid for that, you know, those kinds of things. So that, you could look, you, you could easily say you would, you saved ten percent by doing it in-house, and it certainly didn't cost us thirty five million to have Jeff Barnes and Dwayne Van Hemer and Mike Lyden and Joe Moore and White Fang and run the program. That's who ran.
Okay.
Charlie, if I could add to Dwayne's comments, I just pulled up the costing spreadsheet, and we, our internal staff for that construction management is, in just the geo bond alone, projects is about five hundred thousand dollars a year, but when you compare that to the total expenditures, it's less than one percent of the total expenditures for the projects. So it's running about point seven, point eight percent of the project costs. So that's a pretty significant return on investment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I would add that the bones are still in place. I mean, we have the systems down, whether I'm here or not. Jeff's and the other folks in the facility departments, we've got a lot of experience down there now, and I, I don't, I feel like we're in good hands. And we can, we can keep moving it forward, maybe not at the frantic pace that we were, and certainly not at seven and a half million, but you know, we do a couple million a month. I feel confident that the physical plant can handle it moving forward.
So I mean, ten years and three hundred and sixty million dollars, it's tough to just kind of, you know, boil it down to a couple of pages. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of good work in there, and Dwayne does a, a nice job of speaking about it, always, no matter how many times he talks about it, just as passionate as the first time, which I love to hear that it never fades. And, and so it's been, you know, he's done some great work, and, and we wanted to share that with you, hey, because we need to give you an update on closing out the projects, but also we really do believe this is the foundation for the work that, that we want to do moving forward. And we plan to share a little bit of that in our community engagement sessions, just because the approach we took the first round is gonna be slightly different than the approach that we are going to take this time with community engagement. And I'm gonna go back to that, that timeline that I shared here at the beginning. And like I said, we're here at the, well, now the beginning of May, but really what we're gearing up towards is to get to the, the community vote at the end of November, or excuse me, the beginning of November. And what we wanted to focus on this evening was giving the board a blueprint of what we hope that community engagement in June and, and July looks like. But a couple of other things to point out along the way that we'll come back to a little bit is a big night or a big meeting here on June eighth for the board as we look at those preliminary guiding principles that are also going to be important to the work that we do around FMP two point oh, along with the presentation and the approval of the, of the ballot language. And so we're hopeful that the work we do as a committee and through the community engagement shapes the project enough and shapes kind of the vision enough that we're ready to vote on that ballot language at the end of August. And if, remember, we also included the Portrait of a Graduate sessions on here, and that is, is by design because as the board has shared, shared with us, really the second version of the FMP process should be driven more by instruction curriculum and what we want to see from a portrait of a graduate for, for our students as they leave the district. And so really taking a view of our buildings more through that instructional lens, as opposed to just making a lot of those improvements that, that Dwayne talked about where we needed to increase capacity, and we needed to make upgrades to our systems that drove the work behind FMP one point oh. And so as we think about this and thinking about where we're going to go for November second, we really want to start with the end in mind, and, and this is our vision for what comes out of the community engagement sessions and the work the board does around guiding principles as we go into those informational meetings in the fall in preparation for, for the votes in November. And so this is a mockup of what this document we think will look like. And we're gonna go through and talk about these pieces and how we get there. But really, this is what we would use. When we go out in the fall to have those informational sessions, we would give people that came this document, and, and we would use this as our guide to try to tell them about the projects and then why we picked or why we selected the projects we're going to select.
Chase, just so you know, it didn't switch screens, so you're not on that document.
It didn't. Okay, thanks, Kristen. Glad I didn't talk the entire night.
I thought you were keeping us in suspense there. Gonna have a big, big reveal in a second.
Yeah. How about now?
Now you got it.
Okay, well, bummer. Now, I, I had that whole like speech prepared, but anyway, okay, so this is the document we'll use in the second round of community engagement. It provides kind of, I think, we think a written summary, a guide of what we want our community to see in terms of the projects, which those will be at the bottom half of the page, but then also top. What are those guiding principles that the board established to really envelop FMP two point oh? And then what were those priorities that the community gave us in terms of those driving factors as we went to establish the, these projects? Again, we believe that we need to make a switch from the way we engage with the community the first time around because the needs of the district are different. We're in a different spot. And so it really builds up the momentum that we have from, from Portrait of a Graduate as rather instead of looking at specific projects like, hey, we think we need to add a gym to Schimmick, or we need a new art room at Southeast. We want to look at it more in terms of, we would like classrooms that are more focused on STEAM or STEM. We want better outdoor learning facilities. We want flexible instructional spaces. Those are the type of guidance that we want the community to bring back to us through the engagement process so that we can then develop a a document like this that we can share with the community in the fall. On the backside would be that timeline that we've talked about in the winter, and so we would see how the projects align with the feedback we get from the community, but then also that nice timeline we have laid out in terms of those different phases that we'd work through over the next two years for FMP two point oh. These guiding principle pieces, well, things that will come back, the committee will work on, and we'll come back to the board with those at the June meeting. But what I'd like to move to next is really, what, what do I mean by priorities? Kristen, let me know if we switch or if I have to delete. Did, did it switch?
Okay. You're good to go.
Thanks, Kristen, for, and by the way, Kristen put all these documents together. She did a really nice job. And what our vision is, is to go out to the community and through the engagement process, give a recap of where we are, Dwayne, to summarize what he just shared. And then have another section where we talk about the transition from FMP one point oh, the work we did, what drove that? And as we turn the page to FMP two point oh, and this folk, this focus on being more instructional and curriculum driven in the way we develop our actual spaces inside our schools utilizing Portrait of a Graduate as a springboard, we would have this conversation about all the different elements instructional wise that could be included in how we design and how we construct schools. This is a sample list, one that we've put together with our small team of some of the concepts that we would put out there for the community to consider. We need to now turn and engage Amy and Diane and the rest of our colleagues on the teaching and learning side to help us build this list out, so we, we give the community a robust piece of, excuse me, a robust list of options or priorities that they want to see in, in the work that we do. Some of these will be familiar to you because they're concepts that we've talked about that you've seen already in FMP one point oh. Climate action, we have a standalone plan around that, playgrounds, we've done a lot of work in there. And so some are reflective of work we've done, but also ones that we haven't talked about, or we have talked about, but really haven't done a lot of concrete work around early childhood, like we're gonna talk about here this evening. And so we would provide this list of different concepts to our community and talk to them about them. And then we would give them the opportunity to give us feedback about which ones are, are most important. We would do that both synchronous, synchronously through virtual community meetings where we would do Zoom and invite them in to talk to us. They'd also have an opportunity to participate more asynchronously by just going out to the website and pulling up a Qualtrics form that will let them participate in this process. And so Kristen and I are gonna show you kind of right now, so I'm gonna stop sharing really what that looks like and what we've put together for how people will be engaged through Qualtrics, whether it's in the community engagement session or simply by going to our website and, and filling out the form. So Kristen's gonna bring that up. So what we have here is an opportunity for people inside the community engagement sessions after we give background. To go into Qualtrics and then they'll have a list of the items on the on the left hand side. We're still working out how to capture that list that we provided you with the definitions, right? Because you see here that the definitions aren't there. And we know that folks are going to want to see those as well. And so do we hyperlink it? Do we build it underneath this? Do we build it on top of it? Those are some of the things we're still trying to finalize because we know. Not only the words are important, but what the words mean is also important as well. And so we want to be able to provide those too. But all people have to go do is go in. And select the six top facilities priorities that are going to drive what they believe will drive how we put together FMP two point O. They slide them over into the into the bank like that. It tells them when they have six and they hit submit. And it's easy as that for them to participate. Now, they can do that, as I said, by themselves out on the website. But when we do it in our community engagement sessions, we're actually going to do it a couple of times. We're going to have people do it individually and then we're going to break them into small groups. Let them talk about how they prioritize and then resubmit as small groups. So that we can kind of condense and funnel down to get layer upon layer of community feedback on what those concepts look like. One of the great things about Qualtrics and the way that we can use that is then at the end of those sessions. In real time, we can actually show the community for that session where they prioritize the work that they think should drive FMP two point O. So we can then synthesize this data and bring it up. I know that's pretty small, but Kristen and I filled out a couple behind the scenes. Earlier today, but if this was our first engagement meeting, we could see that twenty-six of the people. Prioritized outdoor learning spaces, followed by a workplace learning, followed by flexible. Meeting spaces in the building and steam or STEM initiative based rooms. And so we not only can collect the data from people at the at the community engaging sessions. We can then actually turn around and discuss it with them right there. So they see where the community is leaning on those priorities. We can create a live dashboard on the on our website that updates either daily or weekly. So as people participate. They can get a better understanding of where we're trending in terms of the different concepts. That we believe the community wants to see us put into the projects that that we do in terms of FMP two point O. And so those, that's kind of a very quick and brief overview of what the of what the attributes would look like. And so if I go back to. The overview, those priorities. Would flow into here. And so let's say that one of the priorities was. Different high school or middle school concepts. Well, we would look at the list of projects that we've already discussed. That Dwayne has really started to kind of try to line out for us of things that we need to look to include. And we would see ones that match that priority, things like land purchases, right? Sites for new schools might fall under that. And so then depending on what the priority would be, would be how we would start to funnel down those projects and better align them. With the priorities that the that the community has. Again, it's much different conceptionally. Than what drove FMP one point O, but we're also in a much different spot. Dwayne, the team did a great job of bringing our buildings up to twenty-first learning standards. Now we want to make sure that our buildings as we move forward are defined, are designed, renovated and updated. To match what our community wants to see in terms of what learning looks like inside of those spaces. So we believe that using those concepts as the guide helps us to stay within the guidelines of what the community wants. And also helps us to better align what the what the projects are to the priorities. One of the principles you might have been looking for that you didn't see on that list, and this was intentional even as an example, is. We didn't have equity on there. Based on the conversations we've had with the board and the work that the board's done. I obviously don't want to speak for the board, but but we have a sense of confidence. That the board is going to set equity or something related to equity as one of their guiding principles. And so that would be one of the four that we see up here, right? That idea that equity runs through everything we do. And so we don't need it as one of the lower level priorities. Because equity, along with those three other concepts or four other concepts, or maybe just two other concepts. However, the board comes up with will be kind of like a blanket that wraps around everything else that we're we're doing in in the community engagement sessions. So lastly, before I pause after providing this information and and really getting some conversation and questions is. This really kind of recaps what I said, and it looks like what we would see as our draft agenda. For those nights, we would give an overview summary of where we were in one point O. The background of where we want to go with FMP two point O, the connection, that bridge. Utilizing that individual activity and going through those different. Potential attributes or priorities and allowing folks to to make their own selections. Doing a breakout activity and breakout rooms or then tabletops like we used to do. So they can talk to their neighbors and bounce ideas off each other and then allow them to share at the end. And as we said, we can then collect that data, we can share it back. And then as we go through the three or four community engagement sessions, we'll be able to pull those different data sources together. To give us an overall concept of of really where the community is on what they believe are the factors. That should drive how we prioritize and what projects we do in FMP two point O. The last thing I would add is that we are looking for someone outside to help us facilitate these conversations. We know that continuity is important. And so we actually went to Sam, who led the community engagement sessions back in the day for FMP one point O. He's unfortunately not available, but we thought that would have been a great piece of continuity from one point O to two point O. And so we are back to the drawing board a little bit there about looking for someone outside. To help facilitate these these meetings for us. So. That's a lot of information. I know it was kind of quick and it's a broad overview, but we did want to give you a an idea where we're headed. And get feedback and then see where the board wants us to go.
Perfect shy tonight.
No, we're good.
Charlie, go ahead.
Chase, this is really actually to me very impressive, and I think it follows. Pretty much, I think, talking, asking for Lisa and Janet's. Feedback here too. I think it's pretty much what we've talked about in terms of the the operations committee. I'm not quite sure how to how to express this, but let's say that, let me just describe. A weird scenario. Let's say we have a community session. And it turns out that three quarters of the people at that session. Think that the future of public school education is online learning. And they want the district to be able to accommodate, to provide online earning for three quarters of the students in the district. Now, I I realize that's that's a little extreme, but. How do you, how do you think we could design this input process? Our community input process to to in some way acknowledge a cop or accommodate or accommodate. That kind of. Have an idea about the future of the district in terms of our facility, my, our overall facilities. I mean, the the same thing could be, you know, you could have designed another thing or it's. It says that, you know, half of the people at a session want this district to have six magnet schools. So maybe you can get an idea of what I'm trying to get at here is trying to get. A real difference in future visioning from what we're probably thinking about ourselves right now.
Well, so. I think there's a, the first thing that came to mind was we need to make sure that that list of choices that folks have is very expansive. So if there are. A group of people try that are leaning towards magnet schools or a different design concept. And that choice is out there that we we reach out to a variety of different people to help us. Kind of cultivate that list so they have that opportunity. I think one of the things that we're going to be able to do is, and I don't know if this is going to your question or or not, but. The way that we can collect the data is that we can collect it individually. And then we could actually do a different link for each one of the breakout groups at a community session. And then we could even do a separate link. For each community session. So to your point, like, what if we had a session on June thirteenth and the vast majority of the people there? Kind of. All circled around magnet schools, but in our next three sessions, it didn't really come up. Their votes or their voice wouldn't necessarily just get lost in the sea of other responses. Because we would be able to look at the June thirteenth responses standalone to see where those priorities were and then compare them. With the other other pieces. And so it wouldn't just be one open response window. That would throw everything from June through, you know, the end of July together. We would have some of those different pieces there so that we could look at that and have those discussions. I think the other piece to remember is that. You know, community engagement is is only one of the factors that should drive the work that we do around FMP two point O. There obviously needs to be input from the board and now you're getting principles, but. As representative of the the community, your vision for where we go as a district, relying on some of the expertise on the administrative team. Being able to pull out some of those attributes as well and and their knowledge base about, okay, this is where we think education is going. And so I think it's always a balancing act. We want the community voice. We want to make sure that it's only heard, but that then we act on that. You know, once we listen, we need to act on what we hear or or people lose faith in that. But it also needs to be balanced in the idea that there are other considerations as well. And so. Those are a couple of the initial thoughts that come to mind. I don't know if that gets to exactly what you were asking, but I think there are some other ways that we can help balance that.
Well, thanks, Chase. I wasn't actually, I'm not actually looking for an answer right now. Just trying to get, trying to get some idea of what. Of what we might be facing anyway.
Chase, what you brought up at the end is kind of where my head went when Charlie asked that question about, you know, maybe. Visions that don't, you know, don't align identically and then how we bring that together, right? And I think that's part of our conversation and work here together that. You know, what starts on that list, you know, making sure that's probably at least palpable to everybody, at least. As far as deserves a conversation. And then if the community comes back with, that's a really strong feeling for them, but the board. Feels differently about where that ranks in the priorities. I think that's where. You know, some of this is going to have to have a nexus together about then what does move forward, you know, in some of those pieces and Chase did a nice job of talking about. Input being an element of that. And of course, your voice is a is a huge element of that and then how we bring bring all of those components together. So. I thought that's kind of where you were going with the Charlie's a little bit. What if we get some conflicting visions, you know, at play? And then how do we resolve that issue?
Yeah, I know that conflicting visions, you know, that's something to consider. But I also. I want to try to say this without insulting anyone in the community. But there are ideas in the community about the future of public education. That I I have a hard time grasping and to thinking that they're actual. They're an actual, they're an actual, they're an actuality. But there are several people, there are a lot of people who know that they believe in them strongly. And so that's kind of what I was trying, that's one of the elements as well as conflicting ideas too, so.
I'm sorry if I missed this, but how many of the community engagement sessions do we plan on having?
We haven't zeroed in on that JP, I mean, probably three or four, you know, and I think that. While we've all zoomed a lot and probably too much, one thing that. It's just taught us is that we don't have to maybe do things. As a finite matter, maybe as we have in the past, because we don't have to go rent a place to have a community engagement session. It can be a little more fluid. I mean, I saw Brady. Sitting there in, as I was answering Charlie's question, and I thought, you know, Zoom allows us to do things like. Have a staff only session where we engage the staff around what's the staff thinking? A student only session, right? In addition to how we traditionally thought of, you know, combined community sessions. And so I think we have some flexibility. We do want to use Zoom. If this was six months later, I'd probably say, hey, you know, we'll do a mix of online. And in person, I think we're still a little more cautious and then bringing lots of people back together in a space. Even though the CDC is relaxing guidance, but you know, I think we would do it a minute on three or four. General community sessions, at least in June and July, and then we would like to maybe doing some of those. More targeted ones with students and staff as a possibility as well.
Yeah, thanks, Chase. I think that's a great idea. I mean, I know this is a tight timeline. But I just think the more, you know, input we can get on this, it's just going to be really important. And I really like the idea of having some. You know, specific breakouts for students and staff to get some more targeted feedback that way.
I I I like the difference in the approach this time around than the last time around, because it. It speaks to me a little more directly because the one. One aspect that I did not like the first time around was it felt very much like. Everybody was, okay, what's in it for me? And everybody had to get their piece, right? And this approach is very much what's in it for all of us. You know, just kind of the way it's laid out. So that speaks to me more. I am concerned that it doesn't speak to everybody the same way as it does to me. You know, that was, that was a big piece. The first time around was. We had to appease a lot of different people looking for a lot of different things and we were, you know, pretty well able to do that. So kudos to how that came out that we did as much as we were able to. So that's a small concern I have is that people are going to be like, but I don't understand where's the specifics of. You know, what's happened at this school or that school, right? It's it's a little more. Soft, but I also understand it's a very different ask, right? It's not two hundred million dollar go bond, right? It it's a very different thing we're asking for. And so I I understand that as well. So. I personally really like the approach. I think it's a neat way to go about it. I also really, really like the ability to do the instant feedback with groups, right? Like. I could sit at a table with three people and we could say, yep, we absolutely know what we're thinking and all of these other tables are going to totally agree with us. And then two minutes later, I'm going to find out, wait, nope, every other table does not agree with my table. And here's why, right? Like, I really like being able to do that. Because I think that's how we operate as humans is. We talk through something, we come up with a great idea and we're like, yep, everybody's going to love that idea. Because in my head, it's perfect. And you know, we we know we don't operate that way. So I really like being able to. Have that instant feedback and then have the conversation around it. In the moment, I think that that'll be a nice move. I think that'll give you. Some forward movement there instead of people coming out of it afterwards, but I totally said this and they aren't listening to me. Right? You can have that conversation a little more in the moment and with other people who, you know, did not agree with you, which I think is a. A valuable holding the mirror up kind of practice.
Oh, they are sky tonight.
But I, and I appreciate that feedback, Sean. So thank you. I, you know, we we. We knew this was a little bit of a different approach, but what you said also resonates about people are still going to see what's in it for them and. And we think, you know, we do need to approach it in two tiers. And so. You know, as we would go back in September outright with that that document I showed. We are anticipating putting more of a timeline on that backside, kind of back to what we talked about first. So we can see those specific projects. We just want to give a better format of how we got there, right? And so. Because you're absolutely right, like, I mean. We still need the community to vote on this. And so we're going to have to be able to talk about it, both overall. What's good for the district, but we are going to have to show what's good for the different parts of the community too. And so it continues to be that that balance. So it's a good, it's a good reminder that we are going to have to come back to that specific.
Chase, can I ask a question? I apologize. I've had some interruptions in this conversation. That's the one bad thing about Zoom is that people ring your doorbell and things like that. And you've got to get up and answer it. You talked about equity and it not being, you know, sort of. Baked in more holistically. I'm curious around the impact of of potentially. Engaging our equity committee in one of these targeted community outreach conversations or just have we thought about how to. Ensure we've got a really, really diverse set of voices engaging with us as we think through the priorities.
I think that's one of the reasons, I mean, I think that's one of the reasons we're, I don't want to say that we haven't thought about that, Janet, but I think that's one of the reasons we are bringing this to the board now is so that we can kind of. But I think that's one of the reasons we are bringing this to the board now is so that we can kind of continue this conversation. We wanted to bring you a framework of what we thought community engagement would look like. And then we could start talking about, okay, who do we roll it out to? Who do we target specifically? How do we do it more broadly? And so this conversation is helpful, I'll just be honest with you. We've been so much in the weeds of like developing what the framework is looked like that it was kind of like, okay, let's make sure that we're on the same page of the board about this is a good approach. And then we will start working on that. How do we advertise it? How do we make sure we have a variety of people inside the inside the conversation and make sure those voices are heard? That does bring a good point. One of the things I didn't mention is, you know, we've already started talking about that while Qualtrics is one of the platforms we are going to use, we can provide it in hard copy so that it's available in in school offices here. So that if people want to fill out the survey, then we can load that information to them. So technology doesn't become a barrier for people to participate. We've already tested it out. And Kristin, how many different languages can we put the survey in on Qualtrics?
Right now, we have it translated to our five primary languages, but we can extend that further if we need to.
And so we have sort of
up to 50 to select from, I believe, in the system.
So Janet, we have started to think through some of those pieces. And maybe, you know, we talked about using an outside facilitator for some of our main groups. But there would be nothing that would stop us from, you know, using a bit of a train the trainer model and allowing some other individuals from the team to go out and do engagement sessions with smaller groups of of folks all over the community or the equity committee or other communities that have DPO. Right? I I think there is an opportunity, the way we've set this platform up, that if we have a script and we have those pieces there that we can engage a broader set of our community in in this work over the summer.
That's what I was just going to say, Chase. I mean, I think it'd be easy to go to groups like the Lululeah Council, Center for Worker Justice, Black Voices Project. And we could either do those synchronously or asynchronously like Chase talked about and just give a little opening and say, hey, we really like your input on this. Here's the platform, here's how you get to it. You know, the link's in the agenda. We'd like you to spend five to 10 minutes going through that and giving us your input. Or we could do something a little bit more synchronously and like Chase said, from a train the trainer aspect and have a broader conversation with them. But I don't think just relying on those formal sessions has to be the limit to this. I think there's a lot of other ways we can go out and get that input in some smaller fashion, just like Chase started with, with the student or the staff groups, right? They wouldn't have to be those big community sessions. And so more nimble, more opportunities, more ways to get it out to folks. I think we'll get a broader scope of those voices included.
I mean, it reminds me think of when we were doing the, like, the boundary work when it was driven by trying to balance the the school populations, right? I mean, we had many groups, we had translators available at those sessions. I mean, it feels like we did everything we could to try to engage. And I know we could have done more, but I think some, an approach like that, that's reasonable in the timeframe. I think we'll just speak volumes, right? For our commitment to bringing those diverse voices into the conversation.
Yeah, I I'd really would like us to spend some time in pursuing those those ideas, Matt. So the thing that makes a difference, you know, may get, you know, 20, 30 or 40 people that we wouldn't get otherwise. But we wouldn't have them otherwise too. So having their their voices.
Right, I think that's an easy one for us to go out to some people instead of expect them to come to us, you know, for the sessions we hold. So, you know, I think the more we can take advantage of that model, whether it's this conversation or another one, I, you know, I think that's just got to be a goal for us when we look for community input is trying to go to them and where their meeting spaces are and and how we can just be a part of that conversation with them. So so we can commit to doing that for sure. We'll work that into the plan.
Great.
You know, I know the board, we were pretty heavily involved in that effort that summer with the boundary work. And is that what we're thinking as well, that we might serve in a similar capacity as folks are available?
I think Chase had you down to facilitate the first one, JP.
I think we should be as our schedules allow. I mean, and there's seven of us.
I think that would be really good.
Yeah, I agree. I I got a lot out of that and it was really, you know, it was nice and that those were in person. And maybe this summer, you know, with COVID relaxing, there'd be time for small group stuff where we could meet people face to face, mask to mask.
Or outside, you know, in parks or something, you know, we get, we have more options now in the summer, I think.
I mean, I really enjoy this, so I don't want to cut off discussion, but I know that we're almost already at an hour and we have another topic. And so, I mean, I think in terms of of next steps, what we'll do is we'll continue to refine these pieces, start reaching out to some folks to help us facilitate. And then, you know, the next board work session we have for this is June eight to talk through more of those guiding principles from the board. The Ops Committee meets the week before then on June first. And so that'll be one of the priorities we talked about is, okay, you know, how does that look for the board? So we can hopefully, you know, Lisa talked through maybe a structure for the board to use in that next work session for those principles. And then from the admin side, we can start really honing in on a schedule for those meetings, you know, and to hopefully publish those before the school year ends. We know that people scatter a little bit. And with that flexibility we've talked about, given the last year, there might even be more of that than than we've seen. But the good news is you can zoom from anywhere. But as long as we get that scheduled at least a high level one before the school year, and it's probably the better we are to make sure that people engage over the summer. And we don't completely lose them until the middle of August. But those will be some of the things that we can work on over the next month before we come back together at the beginning of June.
Yeah, I really think that the board working through their guiding principles, I think in the end, will kind of get to Charlie's original question of what happens if people kind of have some very differing thoughts? Well, if they still meet our guiding principles, then we can try and see if we can put them into the fold. And if they really don't meet our principles, then they're not part of the groups, right? I mean, I I think that's a important first step for us to do. And so I'm excited to do that kind of work. Is there any final thoughts on that before we move on to our next topic, directors? All right, let's go ahead and move on to our preschool conversation.
Thanks, Sean. So one topic I wanted to bring to you guys here a little sooner than waiting for some of this engagement work to play out was around preschool. And for me, you know, I think it's a, it's a transformative piece that we can look for in education and what's what's next or what kind of the next priority can be and in what can be really impactful and powerful for our kids. When we consider, you know, our system and and trying to get a hold of learners in an earlier, in in an earlier way. Right now, from the, really from the programming model we offer, in some ways, we're not going to recruit a different demographic or a different group of families into that model. And so it would take a substantive model change for us and and probably a lift of work for us to look at doing preschool differently or in a more expansive way in some key considerations. If you followed some of the national or the federal government conversation, you know, there's a commitment to early childhood education and preschool happening on that stage. And so for us, if we want to be on the front end of that, some of those conversations need to begin sooner rather than later. And so really, the reason to bring it to the work session tonight is to see if we have goal alignment on that as a board right now about continuing conversations around preschool and maybe a more aggressive effort to to start working on some of some of the goals in that area. I know when we've done retreats before, preschool has been a topic and one that's usually been charted as a goal. And so I didn't want to assume, though, and, you know, have us doing too much. There's already an internal group that works with Lisa that we are looking at improvement models and in ways we can continue to improve our preschool experience. And obviously, opportunities for if there was going to be growth or expansion, things we could do too, and and what that would take. So for me, I I felt like there would have been some lost period of time or some lost weeks and months here as we wait for some of the the portrait conversation to finish, some of the community engagement conversation to continue to happen that would have delayed maybe our start on this conversation and and put us a little bit behind if if we're committed to to doing something with preschool. As we talked about those different elements of input, you know, obviously, your input as a board is a huge one here. And if this is something that continues to be a goal for the board, then, you know, we would maybe continue to push a little bit harder on this work and and continue to dig in on it and see where we could, where we could take it in the district. So I guess what I'm asking for is, do we have alignment around that goal? And maybe some permission to to begin some work moving forward more aggressively in in this spot.
Can you more clearly articulate what is the goal that we have, we're looking for alignment around?
Well, I think it would be to serve more kids through preschool, Sean, than what we're able to do right now. And so right now, we feel like we're we're basically at the capacity in the model that we have presented, you know, in a half day model without, you know, significant transportation. It's pretty reliant on families that can do something in the middle of the day and and limits their ability to probably access that program for a whole host of folks. And so I think the goal would be really looking at how do we expand preschool? How do we do a better job with it? Try to capture students that we're not serving through preschool. But there's a lot of implications to that. But those are the implications we would start talking to you guys about in that regard. If if this is something the district wants to pursue and the board wants to pursue, I feel like if we keep waiting on it, we're always going to be in that waiting and planning stage and and never get to the right time about pulling the trigger on doing something differently. Does that make more sense?
It does, because I want to know how far not to get into the weeds in my own comment here. So I absolutely agree that we need to have more access to early childhood education. If that's the just the basic goal, we need to figure out how to serve more kids in preschool. I don't know that I will necessarily agree with everyone on how best to do that. I have a lot of thoughts on how I would do it. And that's why I don't want to get into the weeds tonight, because I don't think that was the point of this conversation. If you want to hear it, I'll tell you. But as a general rule, yes, I I think we need to figure out how to do it. And if that's, let's schedule time to have a conversation where you do want to hear all my thoughts and everybody else's thoughts. Let's do that. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I agree with Sean and just curious sort of the nature of the work, Matt, that you're looking to do, bringing back models to the board for conversation. I know, I know we've had, we had the preschool committee a couple of years back and had recommendations on preschool centers. And I'm just, you know, are you going to take that work and come back with different scenarios potentially? I'm just, you know, just looking for what your next steps would be and what we could anticipate coming back to the board for discussion.
Yeah, so Lisa's here with us. And what I might ask her to do is just talk about the group they have that does work on on preschool efforts and some of the work underway. Part of what we've tried to talk about is what's the best way to engage our stakeholders in the conversation? And where best that input would be helpful, knowing that we have a group working on some of that. And so, Lisa, do you mind jumping in here and just kind of talk a little bit about what group you have engaged in some of that work that's underway? And then what we might see is a a good opportunity to engage some of the community around that?
Yeah, sure. Our preschool group that is functioning right now is pretty much an internal group with some some stakeholder, partner stakeholders involved. Also, some, you know, apparent type stakeholders and some people who would give some input into programming decisions as to, you know, the things that we need to be able to consider to make our programs better all the time in a programmatic fashion. You know, how how do we communicate better with families? How do we, you know, making our, make our teaching and learning better and better all the time? How do we serve our students better? And, you know, I, that is the appropriate function for that, that sort of a group. There are some considerations kind of beyond that group. They're sort of, you know, structurally, maybe landlocked a little bit. There are some decisions that might need to be made that we could, you know, ways that we could get more of the unserved students in our community into preschool, you know, which rely on decisions that 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 stakeholder group isn't able to make. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. There's that that group is certainly important and they're going to continue to do their work. And they need to continue to do do their work regardless of any changes. But in addition to that, we, you know, we need some additional conversation above and beyond that with some some resource management type conversation.
Did that answer your question, Janet? Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm absolutely in favor of expanding our early childhood offerings. You know, when you talk about educational bang for your buck, there's probably no better place to spend it than in in before kindergarten. My only question is, what do we stop paying for, right? I mean, that that, you know, as it is, you know, that would be my question, the details, you know. You know, how do we balance that on, you know? And and, you know, I'm very hopeful of 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 what might come our way from the federal government, also assuming that anything that comes our way, you know, will have a sunset and that we'll have to plan for a future of providing that in the future. And so, yeah, I'd be interested in looking at details if if you folks are looking at a targeted approach at at certain populations and then ultimately a price tag of, you know, kind of what we're talking about and then how we want to sustain that into the future. But certainly, I I just think it's very important. And so so kind of whatever that price tag is and whatever the the model is, I'm certainly absolutely open to having a conversation and digging into into that a lot more.
I think those are excellent points, JP. You know, if funding comes, I think we want to be in a position that we have a plan and we're ready to act on it, right? I think that's critically important for us. And so we want to be ready to go with that. And the other one, you're exactly right. I mean, if we're serious about gaps and outcomes and in looking at how we, you know, close access gaps, there couldn't be a more important place to look at it than here as we get to before kindergarten. And so I think those are compelling reasons for us to to continue that conversation. Like you said, it does take some long term planning and Lisa brought up that resource management aspect. And that's what's beyond the team that's working on it now and why I think it's timely for us to have, continue to have the conversation.
No, I think everybody knows preschool is near dear to my heart. So I'm totally in favor of moving this forward, having the conversation and figuring out. If the board does want to set changing preschool as a priority, what would we need to do? To me, to me, that's the question that we need answered. And that's the work that I think, Matt, you're suggesting doing is is answering that big question is what what do we seriously need to do? And then to JP's point, how much is it going to cost?
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would support that that approach too, for sure. Although I would, my own personal thinking is that you figure out what to do. And then later on, you work on paying for it.
First I've heard of this.
I realize that works a lot better in a research lab setting than in a, in a school board setting.
Jeremy, were you trying to say something? I think the box shifted down to you, but you're muted if you were trying to jump in.
No, you're fine. I was just going to say that to Charlie's point that it works hand in hand.
It's, I mean, it's important that we figure out what we want to do in terms of the preschool. But at the same time, we should have a plan in mind as to how we are going to find the resources to feed what we want to do. Sorry, forgive.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for that. I mean, I think you guys kind of answered the big question. Yes, we're serious about it. Yes, we'd want to know how we could plan for it long term. We know the the effort is a, is one we need to consider and look at and how would we expand our capacity? How would we answer that question? What would we need to commit to to do that? And so in being ready, you know, if if some funds do do come our way. So I think that's enough for us to go on to know, you know, that we can start working on some next steps. And then we'll need to do some additional conversation and follow up with you guys around early childhood education and and what we could do different in the district, what it would cost. And, you know, what kind of timeframe we're looking at to do that.
I think that's great, man. I I think the concrete steps is what we need to do. And I mean, this has been discussed, you know, for years, right? As to how best to move forward with different preschool offerings, right? And it's always been these sort of conversations where we talk about a little bit and then we don't take any action on it. And so we're in the same place we are, you know. You know, that, that we have been for a while. So I think being able to put together some very tangible. Options and steps, right? To move it forward, I think will be very important, because otherwise we're just spinning our wheels. It sounds like we really want to move forward. So. So that's all on our work session agenda unless folks had any other final comments on that.
Only thing, I'm sorry to, I know we're trying to break, but on the, the early pre, early childhood. I mean, I, we're doing, starting this work in parallel with the community engagement activities we just talked about. As I recall, that was one of the items that. Would be asking people to vote on in terms of like their highest priorities, right? Was early childhood. I think that was on the list. And I just want to make sure that we're prepared. What if the community comes back and says, it's not on their list of priorities? I doubt that will be the case, but you know, I just, I don't. Because we've got the parallel activity of the community engagement around portrait of a graduate and P2.0 that we aren't getting out of sync. In terms of what community input is telling us and the direction we're taking. I mean, we just need to align. The inputs that we get, I guess.
Right, and I. Could we not have? I was just wondering if we could not have more access to early childhood education as a guiding principle.
Yep, that's exactly what I was going to say, Sean. You know, ask you guys that now without having maybe a broader conversation about what those other ones might want to be for you. But I think to Janet's point. And what Sean said, that might be something we consider. So if equity is layered over top, is this just one the board feels strongly enough about that will be a board guiding principle? You know, and we could still leave it in there for the community to also affirm or connect, you know, that it's also one of theirs. But we probably need to have that conversation, you know, around what are those other ones to be there? But that's kind of when I let in with those comments that. I feel bad taking this one out of sync in a, in a way, but at the same time, knowing that there's some urgency around us, starting the conversation with early, early childhood education. So I do think we'd want to make it clear for folks as we do that community engagement about where this falls in the board's priorities. In thinking and, and how we're going to think about it and plan for it, no matter what the other community feedback is.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. With that, I would remind directors and other folks that we do have an exempt session following this. So. Don't run away from your computer. You will have to leave the Zoom and get on a, a different one. But if there are no more comments on these topics, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. And all favor? All right. Thank you everyone for your time and the conversation and we'll see some of you shortly.